It is.
The lumber is a huge part of the project.
Yeah.
So, I'm like one percent, thirty percent of lumber. Okay, so you've got to net savings.
That's good.
Maybe we don't have to.
So. From there, it's still cutting through. I think they're just gonna say you're sure.
They're making a change.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And what else? That would be a question. Certainly, it counts. Here. I can touch on.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. So, the large group statement, that's more. It's great escape.
Yeah.
There it goes. Sure, you ran all that. Well, we've got a lot to do. To any of us. Yeah. So, if this is the main source, more challenging. So, outside of this, he's a fine of four with partners back in the rest of. Seven. So, we'll go fifty-three years. So, it's. Yeah. It's. It's. Always.
Please.
Probably worth it. Well. Right. So, I'm just. Yeah, three to some. Do that into the second one.
Yep.
Get rid of that. I mean. Uh. The whole story. I feel that's good. Well, don't need this. This is like. For options. Two, two or. Yeah, so mayor has promised that he put it off. Like, you know, all this. Right, right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, that's. That'll be a conflict.
It's not, it's not.
I will stay. Look at the eleven floor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, uh, said no, we have lots of people who want interest, nobody's. Yeah. Just can't. We're gonna do a press conference.
We can, we can.
This is.
He'll also be. Let's find documents out now. Those two, seven, those key, nine documents. Well, it's just the other. As we get closer, I think that's my favorite. All the way through October. It should be, even though. Even the.
Yeah.
Except that sixteen grand dollars. But there's zero. Well, it's a little weird for the person. So, you wanna be down there to hand.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
If you're gonna be down there in the future. You got another thing else.
I'll wait it for you.
Perfect.
Yeah.
All right, good evening. I'd like to call the order. Uh, it's now six, six P M. I'd like to call Thursday, July twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, meeting, Bubba's planning commission to order. Please, uh, help me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd just like to start tonight by thanking, uh, Rich Casey, first time on the planning commission. As we know that he, uh, left us after last month and is now on the city council. We wish him well. And with that, I also wanna welcome Randy Bennett to the planning commission. So, Mr. Bennett, welcome. Enjoy for the fun that we all get to have every month. So, uh, with that, we'll take roll call.
Mr. Compton.
Here.
Mr. Hankins.
Here.
Mr. Ritz.
Here.
Mr. Arnie.
Present.
Ms. Cutsforth. Mr. Ackley.
Here.
Mr. Bennett.
Here.
Mr. Perrin.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
All right, this meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy which can be found in the back, uh, best of view of this hearing room. At this time, I would ask all commissioners and those in the audience members to please silence and turn off your cell phones or other devices you may have that could disrupt the proceedings. Take a minute here, check mine, okay? Um, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to revise or approve the planning commission's meeting minutes from June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two.
Motion to approve is written.
Second by Jacobson.
Please vote.
All voted yes, motion carried.
All right, at this time, I'd like to accept into record all staff reports, attachments, memos, handouts regarding each application. Staff, do you have any updates or additions tonight?
No updates, Mr. Chair.
All right, next we have the consent agenda. Oh, sorry, we need to vote on, we need to have a vote on the, uh, playing, planning staffs. Non-reports, attachments, memo, and handouts.
Uh, if it pleases the chair, I'd like to make a motion. I guess, are we gonna accept nothing in, or?
I guess that's the question.
You just accept into the record all staff reports, attachments, memos, and handouts.
Uh, if it pleases the chair, I'd like to make a motion, accept and direct all staff reports, attachments, memos, and handouts regarding each applicant, uh, mentioned tonight. Second.
Please vote.
Sorry about that. There's nothing to accept, but we're.
All voted yes, motion carried.
All right, next, uh, we have the consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna, uh, read these into record and I'll see if there's anybody that wants to speak. Um, and if there is not, then we will make one motion to accept these. If there is, we can pull them off and do in the public hearing, so. Uh, item two A is a request to final plat lots one through nine, Fontanelle Hills Estates, being a replat of lot one, Fontanelle replat not, replat eight, lots twelve, thirteen, sixteen, seventeen, nineteen, fifty-five A, two thirty-three, and two thirty-four Fontanelle, and one half of vacated Laurel Lane. The applicant is Hawkins and Storm Holdings LLC, general location Martin Drive and Ridgewood Drive, Martin Drive and Ridgewood Court, case number S two-two-zero-six dash one-four. And item two B, request to final plat lots one ninety-two through two sixty-six and outlots I and J, Lakewood West, being a plating of tax lot fourteen, and a replat of outlot H, Lakewood West, all located in the southwest quarter, section thirty-one, township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Applicant Woodsonia Lakewood West LLC, general location South Sixtieth Street and Highway three seventy, case number S two-two-zero-six dash one-five. Is there anybody here that was hoping to talk on that tonight? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to accept, we'll take one motion for both these items.
Uh, if it, uh, pleases the chair, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve the, uh, consent agenda as presented, items two A and two B, and I'll, uh, spare the, uh, commission of reading them a second time.
Second by Hankins.
All right, motion and second, please vote.
Seven voted yes, Mr. Ackley abstained. Motion carried.
All right, next we go to public hearings. Oh, sorry, uh, those items will go in front of the city council for public hearing on August sixteenth, uh, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, next, we're going to public hearings. Um, we have several tonight. There's not a ton of people here, but just, uh, read a few things here. So, the way this will work is I will announce each case. I'll ask if there's any updates from the planning department. After that, the applicant will have the opportunity to present their request. After the applicant has been heard, we'll open it to the public. They'll be allowed to provide any testimony they'd like to be considered in the record. If you do come up to testify, uh, at the podium, please state your name, spell your name, sign in for the record. Uh, we typically limit that, limit that testimony to five minutes. Again, not a lot here tonight, so we'll see how that goes. Um, after the testimony is taken, we'll give the applicant an opportunity to, uh, do any rebuttal or have any additional comments. Uh, then we'll close the public hearing. Again, I would just ask that everybody treats, uh, the way, everybody the like, the way they like to be treated when they're up speaking and just, uh, uh, be kind to everybody tonight. Okay, uh, first, uh, public hearing tonight is three A, a request to declare as blighted and substandard lot twenty-one A, Old Orchard Place, lot three, Old Orchard Place lot one, Old Orchard Place one, lots one and two, Old Orchard Place two, lots one, two, and three, Old Orchard Place three, lots four and five, High School View, and tax lot eight A, all located in the southeast quarter of section twenty-two, township fourteen, north, range thirteen east, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Applicant Habitat for Humanity of Sarpy County, Inc., general location Tenth Street and Casper Street, case number E C D dash fifty-six. Staff, any updates?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, no updates. I'll just give a brief overview, a brief summary of this request. Um, applicant is Habitat for Humanity. Um, the blighted and substandard process is the first process in an attempt to get to financing. Um, Habitat would like to come in and do some, uh, affordable housing in this area. The area is generally located near, uh, Ninth and Casper Street. It is adjacent to the Fort Creek Road corridor and it is adjacent to property which has already been deemed blighted and substandard, um, some years ago. Staff is supportive of this request. Um, we believe that it meets the, um, statutory requirements. Also would point out that those statutory requirements, um, you know, should be liberally construed. So, staff does believe that overall this application meets the necessary statutory requirements. If this area were to be deemed blighted and substandard, we're still well under the threshold required by statute. Um, you know, we're sitting between nine percent and ten percent of the total city area. That would be, uh, under this designation, and so we won't run into a problem there. Otherwise, I know the applicant is here and his representative, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to them.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Mike Mateka, uh, one zero two five zero Regency Circle, uh, suite five two five. Uh, good evening, members of the planning commission. I'm here on behalf of Habitat for Humanity. Um, I, maybe before we start, I'd just like to make a, uh, just talk a little bit about Habitat's business model. Uh, just to, uh, try to address any common misconceptions that come up or questions that you may have. Uh, Habitat, uh, does not give the homes away. Uh, it sells the homes, you know, for appraised value. And the, uh, they provide the long-term financing, the thirty-year mortgages, at low interest rate loans, uh, which the owners have to repay. Uh, they, in doing this, they provide uh, both a vetting process and training and education for the homeowners. Uh, the homeowners have to do three hundred and fifty hours of, uh, sweat equity. Uh, and all of this is done to make sure that Habitat is, uh, comfortable, that the homeowners can both afford the home and have the ability, both financially and education, to maintain the home. And the other thing I'd like to clarify is, even though Habitat is a nonprofit, they are paying taxes on this land and will continue to do so. The area that we're requesting, uh, for, uh, the blighted and substandard is, uh, you know, the lot twenty-one, and lot A, and then those lots to the, to the west. Uh, the actual project is only gonna be on, uh, lot twenty-one A, the large lot, and a portion of tax lot eight, uh, below. Uh, but we've expanded the area, uh, for the blighted and, uh, you know, substandard designation. Uh, all of the property owners, uh, within the blighted and substandard area have received notice. Uh, Habitat has, uh, uh, talked with them, um, and, uh, you know, so they, they are aware, uh, of this, uh, they did receive notice of, of this hearing tonight. The, I, I know all of you are familiar with the definition of blighted and substandard. Uh, and I don't really wanna go through all of the details, or I can, I know that I don't want to, but I don't know if I, uh, wanna take your time to go through all of the details on it. But if I may, I'd like to hit maybe some of the points in the definitions of why this property is blighted and substandard. The part, the definition of blighted has kinda two sets of requirements. One is subjective, uh, and the other is objective. And you need to, don't need to meet everything they say. You don't have to have all of the conditions that they say in the statute. You just have to have at least one of the subjective for blighted and one of the objective for blighted. Uh, in talk, in looking at the, uh, subjective standards, kinda in grouping them, you know, one set talks about the existence of defective or inadequate street layout, uh, faulty lot layout in relation to size, obsolete plating. Um, this area was platted in eighteen eighty-seven. When I saw that, I thought it was a typo, uh, but I checked the land records and it's, sure enough, it was platted in eighteen eighty-seven. There's been some replating of some of the lots, uh, since then, but, um, it, uh, uh, has resulted in some, some unusual situations. If you look at the, uh, map, uh, lots four and five, kinda in the, to the west, uh, are, uh, landlocked. Uh, they don't have access to an improved public street. Uh, the street that is to the west is, I believe, the private road of Bellevue West. Uh, you have the, uh, undeveloped, uh, street, uh, right away next to them. Uh, lot three is also in that category, but lot three does have indirect access in that, uh, or, maybe it's lot two. I mean, it's like an eye test here. Uh, uh, the, yeah, that, well, I guess we have two lot threes. That's right, cuz there's replat. So, the big lot three doesn't have direct access, uh, lot, but it has indirect access cuz it's also owned by the owner of the other lot three. Um, the, uh, if we can maybe go back to the, zoom out rather than in, yeah. Uh, the streets from the south, from the subdivision to the south dead end at lot twenty-one, or one, uh, one of them at, uh, tax lot eight A. Uh, those in the proposed development will be extended into twenty-one, you know, to provide circulation, uh, uh, to, uh, uh, Casper Street. Another category is, of, of conditions for TIF is, or for the blighted, uh, designation, is unsanitary or unsafe conditions. Uh, on lot twenty-one A, uh, that's the lot that's owned by Habitat, uh, there's an abandoned well, uh, which does create both safety and health issues. Uh, the dense trees and vegetation, uh, create the opportunity for illegal activities, uh, dumping. Uh, the lack of the sidewalk along Casper, especially along twenty-one, um, cuz there's a steep grade going from, going uphill east to west. And the topography is such that there's, you know, this, it rises quite rapidly on the south side of the street that without a sidewalk, it is unsafe for pedestrians, uh, or bicycle traffic, especially, uh, given the proximity to Bellevue West High School. Another condition from the statutory definition is, uh, deterioration of site or other improvements. Uh, the lot twenty-one A doesn't have any storm sewer drainage, so there's that steep kinda going downhill from west to east, uh, that creates a runoff and erosion, uh, runoff into the neighboring properties, erosion on this property. The, another statutory, uh, condition, uh, again, if, these are a long list of, um, uh, is that conditions that in, may endanger life or property by fire or other causes. You know, the, the, all the vegetation on twenty-one A could be a source, you know, for a fire, and then it'd be difficult in it right now for emergency vehicles to get there. In, these are perhaps a summary of, uh, the blighted, uh, conditions, uh, that are this, in the subjective requirements. You're, you also, uh, have to have at least one of the objective, and I call it objective because these are data-driven. Uh, you know, there's actual, uh, data on it, and the one this property or this area meets is, uh, the average age of the, uh, either the residential or commercial structures have to be at least forty years. And based on the records of the Sarpy County, uh, assessor, uh, the average age of the homes within the area are eighty-five years. The, uh, definition for substandard is, uses many of the same factors as blighted. Uh, it's sort of won't really go through those again, other than, you know, it comes down to, does it, uh, is, are there existence of conditions which could endanger life or property by fire or other causes? Uh, conducive to ill health, uh, crime detrimental to public health, safety, uh, kinda many of the things we've talked about, so. If there are any questions, we're happy to answer the questions. We, uh, respectfully request the commission to, uh, to recommend approval of the, uh, blighted and substandard designation for this area. Thank you.
Okay, before questions, we'll open the public hearing, and if there's not any, then we'll get questions back up. Is there anybody, open the public hearing, is there anybody here to speak on?
Sir.
Item three A.
I'm sorry, I forgot to put a sign up.
Thank you.
Guys, good. Are you gonna speak? No? Okay. There's nobody here to speak, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. Uh, any questions for the applicant? Commissioners?
No questions, just a comment. Again, this would be a great infill project. Um, as Mr. Mateka indicated, this thing was platted in eighteen eighty-seven. It's obviously not been developed for all these years for many reasons. A lot of it's topography, and TIF is a perfect use here because the infrastructure to bring in is gonna be costly. To me, it's consistent with what we did at about Thirty-Fourth and Chandler, six or twelve months ago, when we did a TIF there for housing development, and I see that one's underway, so this would be a great infill project. And if there's no other questions or comments, I guess, go ahead.
One quick question. The, uh, the houses that would probably be built by Habitat, were they in conformance with the future land use map of this area?
Yes, it is. This area is, uh, shown as residential in the future land use map, so, and if they are approved for TIF funding, then obviously they'll come through with a plating and a rezoning.
Okay, with that, I would make a motion to approve of the blighted and substandard designation for all of the lots indicated in our application, and the reason for that is cuz it meets the statutory requirements for a blighted and substandard area. Second by Compton.
Motion by Ackley, second by Compton, please vote.
All voted yes, motion carried.
This item will go to the city council for a public hearing on September sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you, guys. All right, our next public hearing is item three B, our quest to approve the redevelopment plan for lots one and three, Civic Center Plaza replat one. Applicant Mercury Property Management, Inc., general location Washington Street and Mission Avenue, case number E C D dash five seven. Staff, any updates?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. No updates. Um, again, I'll just give a brief overview of the request, and then we can have the applicant's representative come up. Um, this request is, um, dealing with the area that used to be, um, owned by the city, uh, at the core of Old Town. Um, the city, uh, sold it several years ago and has been, uh, anticipating the redevelopment of the area and has been, um, wanting that area redeveloped for quite some time. Um, approximately ten years ago, um, just like the Fort Creek Road corridor, the city went through and, um, deemed or designated the Mission Avenue corridor as blighted and substandard, which would pave the way for future redevelopment and, um, you know, potential TIF requests and TIF financing. So, that leads us to where we're at today. Um, the application in front of you is for, um, a mixed-use type building. Basically, the main level would be commercial retail office space with the upper floors being multifamily residential. When the city did an Old Town Vision Plan in, uh, twenty sixteen, um, it, this was a similar type use as to, um, exactly what the city was looking for at that time. Um, the idea is that hopefully we'll draw more businesses and more people down to the core and that downtown area. With that, uh, staff is supportive of this request, is recommending approval, and, um, if the, Mr. Willis, if you wanna come forward and you can provide a little bit more detail for the commission?
Thank you. Members of the commission, Andrew Willis, W I L L I S, two thirty-three South Thirteenth Street in Lincoln, on behalf of Mercury Property Management. Um, yeah, so the, the, the project, the proposed project that would, that would, this redevelopment plan would help implement is a four-story building, about a twenty thousand square foot footprint. Uh, first floor retail, uh, commercial retail, and then three floors of apartments on top, uh, so about fifty-three units, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, uh, slightly more, about thirty, one bedroom to twenty-three, twenty-four, two-bedroom units. And it, you know, so total cost of this project, we're looking at about twelve point three million dollars, uh, for, from the developers, you know, to, to do the, to do this project. Um, and in order to make that feasible, uh, this redevelopment plan, our, we're requesting taxing and financing assistance. As we look through this, there's, there's a lot of uses of TIF that, that are, um, that are really, you know, kind of those, what I consider those typical uses, grading, water sanitary, storm sewer, just, you know, utility improvements, streets and sidewalks. Um, and then, and then also some facade enhancements, you know, the beautifying the area, following in that with the overall plan for the area. Uh, they're, based on, again, about a twelve point three million dollar development cost, uh, to build this, um, the anticipated value is over, a little over ten million. We have ten million, four hundred twenty-five thousand, which is gonna yield about two million, four hundred thousand in TIF, roughly. Uh, again, there's pl- more, more uses than that identified, uh, but that really makes this, that really makes this project work. Um, the nice thing about this project, when we look at it in, in the plan, is how well it conforms to the comprehensive plan. I mean, the, you know, the comprehensive plan identifies Old Town redevelopment, uh, and, and, you know, and redeveloping this area as a mixed-use area, increasing housing and diversity types in the area, encouraging second-floor residential, having that mixed use. So, again, this kind of hits all of those, all of those points that, uh, that are a part of the plan. Um, and so it really, it's a, you know, it's kind of an exciting, exciting project, uh, taking former public property and, and, and bringing in that mixed use that should encourage additional, with more commercial space, and also additional, additional, uh, residential downtown. When I look at this, you know, in the plan, there's a couple of things I wanna point out. Um, you know, generally looking at the redevelopment, a redevelopment plan, uh, under the community development law, we look at a couple of items, uh, to start with. Property acquisition, again, the redeveloper recently purchased, the applicant recently purchased this property, um, so already owned privately, there's no public, uh, disposition or acquisition of land. From a population density standpoint, again, we're trying to add about fifty-three units, uh, but that is in line with the comprehensive plan. That's the, the idea is, is to in- increase the density in a mixed-use area down there, so, uh, it fits in well. Um, the project is designed to meet traffic and pedestrian circulation, uh, the plans for the Old Town redevelopment, so again, it just, it's, it really fits in well. From a parking standpoint, there'll be about a, approximately a sixty-stall off-street parking added, so with fifty-three units, we're already over one-to-one, you know, have those, those, in that, uh, surface parking lot, the private lot, with some additional stalls for the retail, plus there'll be some additional, the goal is to have the additional on-street parking added as well, so, uh, don't see, foresee any parking issues at all. Um, in fact, it should, you know, be beneficial overall. Uh, no rezoning is required, and again, like I mentioned before, it really fits in, uh, it really fits in well with the comprehensive plan. Uh, when we look at using taxing, increment financing for each project, you had to go through the cost-benefit analysis, and so exhibit A of that redevelopment plan is the cost-benefit analysis. Um, as I mentioned, the base value, the current valuation's ninety-seven thousand dollars, so just under a hundred thousand dollars, anticipated completed value for this building when, when done, it's ten million, four hundred twenty-five thousand, so we got a, you know, an over ten million dollar increment in value, uh, which is gonna yield that two point four million dollars in TIF over the fifteen-year period. As I mentioned, we have, we have more uses than that, so there's no issue on the uses side. Um, you know, looking through those other pieces of the cost-benefit analysis, impact on employers and employees, uh, in the area and in the city, and. And, you know, we see this as a positive, it's, it's bringing in additional commercial space there, uh, bringing in additional housing units in that area. Again, conforming to the comprehensive plan and the desired use of this area. Um, should increase traffic to the area, bringing in, you know, more, more, uh, more, uh, traffic for other businesses as well. In addition to the fact that we'll have those additional residents that will need services and again, just kind of adding to the vibrancy in the area. One thing we look at is the impact on student populations with, with a TIF project. The nice thing about this, so it's infill, so we're not spreading out farther. So again, that, that is less of an impact in the sense that we're not, we're not extending area, we're, we're doing infill, infill development. And with fifty-three apartment units, primarily one-bedroom and then two-bedroom, uh, statistically, when we look at, we're on the statistics for Nebraska. Um, it comes to say, show this, in a, in an apartment of this size, fifty-three units of one-bedroom and some two-bedroom, you're, you're looking at, on an average, that you're only gonna have about, under ten, five to eight school-aged children in the area. So there's really not, with the infill development and not a, not a large influx of, of children, it's not, we, we don't see this as a major impact to the school district. And again, they've, uh, you know, they've got notice of all this as well and they know the, the, this project and they've seen this plan. Um, but again, so we don't see that as a, a major impact. Um, it, it really just, as I mentioned, I'll just keep saying it, just fits in really well with the overall plan. I think I'd be happy to answer your questions you have about the project, but that's kind of the, the very brief overview of, of, of what we're proposing and hope to, hope to develop.
Thank you, I'm gonna open the public hearing and then we'll see if there's any questions, so I'll open the public hearing. Anybody here to speak on item three B? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions for the applicant?
Again, I'd just comment, I guess, it seems like a good use of the TIF, this area's been blighted and substandard for a number of years and be good to see some development occurring down there.
Question?
Mr. Chair, hearing, no other comments from the other?
I, I do have a comment, I just make sure everybody else has a chance. No comments, no? I, can I, I got a question, just a couple of things quick. You're asking for five percent interest rate on the TIF note and I just wanna have a conversation with staff. I know we've done a lot of these lately and I don't think we've ever, ever been at five percent, they've been maybe three and a half to four and a half. I don't know if we need to have a conversation about that or kind of where's the city at on the five percent?
With current rates, the finance director is, is comfortable at that level.
Okay, and then the second thing I had is, uh, when I look at your preliminary projected TIF uses, there's a couple in there that I just want a little bit more information on. You know, normally, when I think of TIF, it's a lot of things you mentioned in your thing, but there's two that kind of caught my eye of, they don't really, in my eyes, fit within the TIF because they're truly construction development cost, private, not the better good of the, of the public. So you have interior LED lighting and HVAC upgrades. And it does just seem like two very specific building things, not TIF things, so.
Yeah, and, and so that, that's a good question. So in fact, a couple of years ago, the Community Development Law statute was amended to make this, the enhancements, energy efficiency and facade enhancements. Those are energy efficiency enhancements, to make it very clear, those are eligible uses. And the idea is, the cost that we have in those projections is the cost above minimum code. So, uh, instead of doing, you know, the regular lighting, they're gonna be spending an additional three hundred fifty thousand dollars to get that higher energy efficiency lighting in there that's, that, you know, reduces the load for the city and is considered eligible use in statute. So, uh, same with, same with the HVAC, you're doing an upgrade on that, so this is only the cost above minimum code. So the cost of the, those improvements is actually a lot higher, this is just the, what they're, what they're willing to pay in excess of what they would otherwise have to pay to make it a better project, to make it more energy efficient.
Great, thank you very much for that explanation. So I have, Mr. Jacobson?
No problems, thank you, I did have one small question for, uh, staff on, on the area itself. This area has been previously designated, uh, blighted and, uh, substandard, is that correct?
Correct.
And the project itself doesn't totally take care of the entire area, but it's operating within?
It operates within the area that was previously designated, yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Hearing silence, if the chair is, uh, okay with the chair, I'd like to make a motion? Like to make a motion to recommend approval of, uh, the Mercury Property Management Incorporated Old Town Redevelopment Plan based on elimination of a blighted and substandard area, conformance with some requirement, with the requirements of state statutes and provides an opportunity for infill in the development of the, uh, Old Town District.
Second? Motion by Jacobson, second by Ackley, please vote.
All voted yes, motion carried.
Alright, and this item will go to the city council for public hearing on September sixth, twenty twenty-two, thank you. Alright, next, uh, for public hearing is item three C, request to approve the Fort Creek Road Plan. The applicant is the city of Bellevue, case number one seventy, staff, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, just a little bit of background on this. Um, the city originally adopted the Fort Creek Road Plan, the original plan, in, in two thousand eight. Um, obviously, a lot has changed over that time. And when, um, our current administration came in, Fort Creek Road continues to be a priority. And, um, the original consultant, H D R, was brought in to come in and take another look at the plan and to do some updates because, like I said, obviously, a lot has changed. Um, just changed in the market, changed with, um, different planning techniques, design guidelines, all of those things. And so since the Fort Creek Road, um, revitalizing the Fort Creek Road corridor remains a priority, we wanted to take another look at it. Um, to see if there were some updates that we could do. H D R was brought in, Mr. Bassan is here tonight, um, and he will give a, a brief presentation, um, about the plan itself. Uh, basically, the idea of the plan kind of remains the same, um, looking at a multimodal corridor, also looking at, you know, higher density development, um, more, um, walkability, pedestrian-friendly, things of that nature. Also looking at, um, things like the B R T bike lane, again, all I, all item and elements that would be designed to bring people and bring life to that corridor. What you see before you, um, again, represents the work of H D R and city staff, um, over the course of the last year or so. Um, we're happy to be able to present it this evening to the planning commission. Um, couple of things, the plan went out to you folks a couple of weeks ago, just so you would have time to take a look at it. Um, I didn't put the plan back out since it's a large document, but a couple of things have been updated. We did update the city logo to the newest city logo, thank you for the catch, Mr. Jacobson. So that has been taken care of. Also, H D R has updated the date of the plan to August twenty twenty-two, is that's the anticipated city council, um, approval date. But obviously, we will, uh, make any changes as necessary moving forward. Um, along with a packet, there are letters of support from MAPPA, from Metro and from the Papio N R D. Those agencies would all be very important partners with the city in the overall, in the ultimate implementation of this plan. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Bassan and, uh, let him speak a little bit more detail about the plan.
Alright, thank you, Tammy, and members of the planning commission. Um, we think this is a really exciting opportunity, uh, for Bellevue. Um, as, as Tammy mentioned, the fact that we have letters of support, uh, from those three entities is absolutely critical and important to helping move this forward. The other thing I wanna add before we go through the plan itself is that city staff was intricately involved with this. Uh, we had a multi-day design workshop, um, approx- just over a year ago. Um, and city staff participated each and every day, provided common input throughout that process. So that really shows, what you're gonna see tonight, shows that input, um, of, of city staff and key stakeholders. Um, so with that, we'll start walking through the plan itself. Um, it's really set up on kind of three key components that you'll see up here. Uh, one is green infrastructure and being as sustainable and light on the land as we can. Uh, one is the total mobility system, uh, so we're looking at the various ways people are gonna move throughout the corridor, bike, ped, transit and vehicular. Um, and then creating transit-oriented development, that pedestrian-oriented mixed-use environment that's gonna add rooftops to the corridor that actually makes it sustainable in the long term. Um, there's a lot of benefits that come to the city of Bellevue, uh, because of this. Um, there's gonna be jobs created, uh, there's gonna be new rooftops that we mentioned that become customers, uh, for the new retail that's repositioned along the corridor itself. Um, there's the fact that, you know, over time, Bellevue will run out of land to grow into. This gives you an outlet so that the city itself can continue to keep growing, um, as time moves on. Um, it's a catalyst for growth, um, other communities, uh, within the metro area are doing similar aspects. Uh, this allows Bellevue to do that as well. Uh, this map, uh, that you see up here shows the, the kind of the future growth areas. Um, and again, we mentioned that those, you know, will dwindle over time, so looking long-term into the future, uh, this provides that outlet for Bellevue. Um, we talked a little bit about the total mobility system and the key to that is those three forms of, uh, mobility. You know, obviously, first thing everyone does in the day is, is they walk, uh, but we wanna provide opportunities for, uh, cycling, uh, public transit. Um, and that's the, the metro and the B R T component, um, and then also vehicular traffic. So the important thing is, this begins to set the stage for it. Um, Metro and MAPPA are incredibly excited about this opportunity. Uh, you're all familiar with the Orbit, uh, Bus Rapid Transit Line in Omaha, east-west on Dodge Street. Um, they are looking at their second route and the second route is gonna go north-south down Twenty-Fourth Street. Uh, so it's gonna go to the Q Transit Center. Um, they like this, but they really like the extension on Fort Creek Road because right now, all the B R T lines, they're with traffic, uh, they don't have their own designated, uh, lane for those bus vehicles. This will be the first opportunity in the metro where you truly have B R T. What we have right now is called B R T Lite because it's integrated with traffic. So the ability to have a primary transit corridor, uh, where these buses can make very quick headways, basically, headways is the amount of time between the, the bus that just went by and the next one, is very, very significant. That becomes true transit and around that transit, then, you get that catalyst opportunity, uh, for growth, um, and development. So when we look at the corridor itself, we divide it into two sections and that's based on the existing roadway section. Uh, you see north of three seventy and you see south of three seventy. As we looked at this, uh, we had to come up with two different scenarios based on those location for what the future roadway would look like. So this is the existing cross-section north of three seventy, um, obviously, on the west-hand side, we have the active rail line. Um, then you have three lanes in each direction divided by a median. Um, so looking at traffic volumes, uh, we know those have decreased significantly. Um, you have basically the redundant facility, uh, U S Highway seventy-five, uh, to the west. So looking at that, the idea would be that you would transfer, uh, lanes, uh, all traffic would go onto the three northbound lanes. That'd be a lane in each direction and a center turn lane. Um, and then the southbound lanes, uh, you would have basically two bus rapid transit lanes, uh, bi-direct, bi-directional. You would have a buffer strip, um, and then you would have the protected cycle track, basically the bike and ped, uh, facility. And the reason a lot of people ask, why did we kind of put those in those order? Is that B R T and the bike-ped facilities, you want less interference from turn movements. So with the rail line on that west-hand side, there's fewer cross-streets. Um, so from a mobility perspective, it made all the sense in the world to put that facility on the west-hand side and keep the roadway facility on the east side. So this is north of three seventy, uh, this is the existing lane configuration, south of three seventy, so two lanes in each direction, variable median, um, and variable shoulder strips, um, with much less, uh, traffic density down here. The thought was, basically, you would do the shoulder lane, um, as the B R T, uh, basically, bi-directional based on the direction it's going. You would have a widened buffer, protected bike lane, um, and the outside shoulder, and then the inside lanes would be the traffic lanes, either north or south. Um, looking at this, then, we began to kind of lay out conceptual level stops, or what we call stations. Um, and the key with bus rapid transit is, you wanna intersperse those, uh, about, you know, every, every half-mile to a mile and a half somewhere in there because the goal is to have fewer stations because you wanna keep the speed of that bus rapid transit vehicle going. If you pack the stations too close together, uh, you lose the rapidity and you lose the, the, kind of the rapid and the rapid transit nature of the vehicle. So as it laid out, um, it laid out really, really nicely, Child's Road, Avery Road, Herman Drive Station, uh, stop at the base at Kenny Gate, um, and then the farthest south one, um, at Fairview. So the layout of that lays out really, really nicely, uh, for workable and viable transit. Um, looking at potential stops, stations, uh, this diagram shows what those could look like. Uh, this is really pulling off of kind of the standard form, uh, that Orbit currently has. But the idea is that you have what we call far-side stops, so those stops are located on the far side of the intersection. And what that allows, it allows the bus vehicle to clear through that traffic signal, pick up, uh, ridership, and then as soon as they're ready, they can go forward. If you had them on near side, you would have to wait for that traffic signal and again, that slows down, uh, the speed at what that, that bus vehicle can go. Um, obviously, a lot of emphasis is placed on pedestrian crossings, uh, that pedestrian movement, how it integrates with the cycle track and so forth. So this just gives you a nice snapshot of what that could look like. Lot of questions, um, and concern about kind of the realignment of those transit lanes, um, at the north end and the south end and where you make that transition between the two different sections. Uh, so we had traffic engineers study that, uh, very, very closely. Um, and what these slides begin to show is that, that was studied and for the level of service, uh, there is no issues at this time. That's something as this project continues to move forward, we'll continue to need to look at that, look at changes in the traffic volume on Fort Creek Road um, and those cross-streets. But as of right now, uh, the traffic engineer said that these transitions seem to be very, very workable and within kind of what people are comfortable with in terms of level of service. Um, and even ran simulations or some concern, especially at Cornhusker with the amount of traffic on there. Uh, so this represents what that was, but again, um, it gave us a level of service C during peak hour, uh, which, uh, everyone seemed to be very, very comfortable with. Um, green infrastructure, you know, one of the purposes of a study like this is to identify, you know, maybe areas where there could be some hiccups or some challenges. Um, we know that there is floodplain within the area, that was raised, so as again, this continues to move forward, uh, that will need to be looked at more thoroughly and in more detail as it impacts each of those stop areas. Uh, but the idea here is that, uh, you know, we would look at wetlands, we know where those are, there was a wetland determination that was done for the project itself. So those have been identified. It's tough to see in these maps, uh, but they are charted out there, so we know the locations of those. Um, in addition, uh, this is kind of the high-level, uh, floodway, floodplain impacts. Um, so this is gonna take a deeper dive, as this, uh, gets studied further, you know, one of the opportunities, um, MAPPA is already looking at a small grant for the corridor. Um, and that might be an area that you jump into this and, and take a little bit deeper dive in terms of the exact location of where those, uh, floodway lines, uh, are located. But the idea is that you begin to address, uh, flood, uh, plain, uh, concerns through green infrastructure. You know, we don't wanna build more and more concrete, but can we do it in a sustainable way? Um, can we use, uh, special, uh, green infrastructure and best practices, uh, to address that? So we've identified several locations, um, where we could begin to capture storm water, slow it down. Um, and then we have a, a whole series of different ideas in terms of what that could look like, uh, whether it's bioswell planters, uh, bioswells in parking lots, different buffer strips, constructed wetlands and so forth. So again, trying to be as light on the land as possible and address some of the concerns that we do have along the corridor. Um, in terms of transit-oriented development, the whole goal here is to create what we call walkable urbanism, uh, pedestrian-oriented mixed-use neighborhoods at each of those transit stops. We're gonna go through several, um, and the idea is that there's areas where, you know, you might target kind of large-scale redevelopment. And then there's gonna be areas that just happen incrementally and individually at a time, so we have some ideas for both of those. So first of all, transit-oriented development, as I mentioned, it's creating walkable urbanism so that people have the flexibility. They can walk to the transit stop, they can bike, you can still hop in your car and drive, you know, wherever you wanna go, uh, but you're given that opportunity to use transit. Uh, we clipped a page from another, uh, study that we did elsewhere that begins to show, uh, you know, what TOD, uh, kind of guidelines begin to look like um, and, and what you manage with those. Uh, walkable urbanism, here's several photos just showing what that truly means at some different scales. Um, but again, always looking at, uh, not just vehicles, but at cyclists and pedestrians. Um, and in order to make that, uh, doable, there's really kind of four key design parameters that we look at. You know, one is, you know, build to the sidewalks, basically have your buildings front onto the street. You have the primary entrance off of the sidewalk, you might have a secondary functional entrance off of the backside off of the parking lot. The second one is, uh, make the building fronts permeable, don't put up blank walls, where you can have retail in there. If you can't, have basically front doors to residential units. Uh, the third one is prohibit parking lots in front of buildings. You'll, you always want on-street parking, uh, but then you can put the parking lots either to the side or to the rear and that creates that nice pedestrian realm. And then finally, create an interconnected network of mobility options. And if you do those four simple rules, you greatly enhance the urban realm, um, and make transit very much possible. Um, so these are the coordinated redevelopment areas, I'll go through these quickly because you guys have seen these in the plan. Um, but we have several of them. Um, the first one is at Child's Road, basically the old South Road site, you know, would've. And again, don't get caught up on the details because these will change moving forward, but this begins to give you But this begins to give you a sense of what could happen around each of these stops if you have first-class transit. And the goal here is, you know, it jumped out very clearly, the marginal uses along Fort Crook Road at this present time. Nothing changes unless you add more rooftops. When you add rooftops, you create more customers. When you have more customers, you get higher and better retail and commercial uses. So the goal is to transition the corridor over time so that you can focus new retail at those transit stops. And then you have basically a gradient of residential opportunities around each one of those. And then noticeably, what you'll notice, you see the red line that represents the bus rapid transit lanes. You have the stops. There's always kind of a central focal point. Usually that's an open space. That's both functional from a kind of parks and rec perspective, but also it usually integrates some kind of stormwater best management practice. So those become the focal points. And then each one of these has a series of different residential typologies around them. It could be condos, it could be townhomes, it could be apartments, even small single-family homes. So this gives you a sense of what Child's Road station area could look like. We just did a quick 3D model to give you a sense of potential density. And this one actually has a rendering. So, you know, you begin to get to see the impact of this. And this is you start thinking about, you know, whether it's Airmen Station at the base. You know, they've been over in Europe, they wanted a different lifestyle. This gives them opportunities. This starts helping attract people, you know, that are new to the metro area that want to live in this certain lifestyle. Moving to the south, this is Avery Road. This is where Galvin Road comes into Fort Crook Road. What if you made it come in a 90-degree angle? You're able to create a little park, open space, stormwater area. And again, this one has predominantly apartments here, once again, trying to increase the density of rooftops. Here's the 3D model and some example kind of buildings that might be appropriate at that location. And then here's a rendering. So, you know, if you're, you know, taking transit, you're kind of coming down here for a job. You know, you get off at your stop here at Avery Road, you have very clearly demarcated crosswalks. And then you could walk to your job in a new office building or mixed-use building at that station area. A little bit farther south, this is the Cornhusker Road Station. We know there's a concept plan for this, but you know, would if you don't need that many fast-food pad sites? Would if you want to increase the density here? This is what that could look like. Once again, adding rooftops to it. Just modeling that up, what that could look like and so forth. This is by Bellevue University. This is Herman Drive Station. Once again, showing a broad range of residential typologies. This one has single-family detached homes, townhomes and apartments as well with a little bit of retail at the station area. Here's modeling it. And then finally, the farthest south, Fairview Road neighborhood. We highlighted, we know Papillion Sanitation is building their facility on the site. That happened about the same time we were in planning, so we didn't change the planning, but it is noted in the document itself. But this looked at, if for some reason that didn't happen, you could get a really killer neighborhood in this location. But probably more important is the, basically the transfer of the BRT center on the far south end where that would be the potential turnaround with future development happening farther south at the Highway 34, 75 interchange. We think it might make sense to move this farther south to capture some of that. But here's modeling and then kind of a 3D photorealistic rendering of what that could look like. This is the transit center. So we think this is important because this would be that park-and-ride lot that residents living to the south in Plattsmouth, they could drive up here, park, catch BRT here. Also, Papillion is envisioning an east-west corridor, so that would have BRT. So this is where that would tie in. So it's kind of a real key focal point for kind of the regional transit system. And then lastly, incremental redevelopment. So these are one-offs. So if someone buys a parcel that fronts onto Fort Crook Road, you know, what tools does the city have? And long-term, you will want to do design guidelines that are transit-oriented development, but we wanted something kind of stopgap in the interim that shows what that looks like. So basically, these follow those four kind of cardinal rules that we covered before. And it shows how different typologies of buildings could be designed to accommodate that. So you kind of in gradient from lowest density to highest density, single-family, townhomes, multifamily. You always see the buildings front under the street, primary entrance off of the street. Parking and parking access is to the rear, whether it's single-family, townhomes or multifamily on the residential side. And then we get into the commercial. That top image is retail or standalone commercial. The left image represents an office or a civic use. And then that bottom right one could be some kind of tech flex industrial type building here. But again, they all follow good urban forum. They contribute to the success of the corridor as opposed to detracking by it. If you put them back, you know, behind surface parking lots that front it onto the street. And then if you tie those all together, you get a full transect showing what those look like. So just some guidance to help the city as these one-offs might come into the door. So with that, that is a very, very quick overview. Thank you for the patience as I went through this. But a nice overview of what the Fort Crook Road Corridor could look like in the future.
All right, thank you. I do need to open the public hearing, so we'll do that quick. I'll open the public hearing. I'll close the public hearing. So we're back to any questions for the applicant discussion comments?
Please, Chair, I have several questions.
Yeah, go for it.
Not unlike maybe what we had on solar panels, maybe, but no, no. Doug wasn't here for that. That's a nice presentation. I really appreciate you taking the time to, one is revise the original presentation that you've made to the city as it's evolved. And two is to kind of shorten it up for presentation here as well, so we're kind of getting a look at it twice. I really appreciate it. I think, as you know, one of the things that's really kind of caused me a little bit of consternation is the opening paragraph in this statement talks about coming out of a area like this and grabbing a cup of coffee and going to your new job in North Omaha. And as somebody that's lived in Bellevue his whole life and is planning commission trying to develop the city into its own center as the second largest city in the metropolitan area. I'm more interested in how we get somebody to have a cup of coffee in Omaha, come down to their new job at the expanded Bellevue University. And how do we do that with a BRT? And so I'm wondering if you can kind of go into that a little bit more on on how professional jobs and commercial get developed along this area. Because we always talk and the buildings that are taller stand out because they're residential. And I don't know that it really capitalizes your thinking on economic development for, for commercial and professional type jobs.
So typically, what happens is residential leads the way. You need the rooftops for everything else to follow. So, so we think that's going to be really important. The other thing, we always try, we call it realistic fiction. We try to be as realistic as possible with any kind of scenario. So what we know in working on this project and hundreds of others like this is that, you know, first things first, you will start kind of pulling people from Bellevue into the metro area because it's going to tie in with the overall Orbit system. Over time, that will flip-flop. As you begin to build the density here and the critical mass at each of these stations, then you're going to begin pulling people here. But you're going to have to create those rooftops for those, each of those station areas to be very, very successful. Once those are successful, you're going to have this really dynamic opportunity, as Mr. Johnson says, of this back and forth. You're going to be pulling people from Omaha and the rest of the metro area and vice versa. People are going to choose to live here and work elsewhere. It's just that back and forth synergy that happens. So I think it creates a great opportunity for this, you know, metro areas, it's interesting. We, you know, driving in, in the morning, there used to be, you know, all the morning traffic would be going one way and then all the evening traffic would be going the other way. Omaha is past that now. I'm always astonished if I have to go, you know, kind of the wrong direction at rush hour. There's just as much traffic either way. That's where we want to get with this. So I think this opens up the door for long-term economic success. We added kind of a benefits page to the front page talking about what those benefits are to the community because they will be drastic. You know, the peril is if you don't do something like this, others are doing it. There's already people, 72nd wants a line, you know, North 30th Street wants a line. You know, if you're not in the queue, you're going to get pushed farther and farther back for it. So, so we think the time is right. We think that from a realistic perspective, kind of the order of things is right. We have MAPPA, we have Metro, and we have the NRD that are behind this. So, you know, the idea is get this happening, get those station areas identified, come up with the tools in the toolbox for the community and allow kind of the market to make it happen, so.
So to, so to build on that, both South Roads area, basically, South Roads Technology Park. And that building itself is not too different in age than Crossroads within six years and roughly the same size of Crossroads, give and take after the expansions. And the Avery area, both are highly dense in fiber optic. And which would beg professional or commercial database, Google type of act, type of activities. How does that sort of fit into this without losing some advantages we see we have in Bellevue or other areas? That really are digitally not as well provisioned as that area is.
I think it opens the door. I mean, you, you want to play to your strengths. And, and with that data that's there, that's great. You know, we showed several mixed-use buildings. You know, as I mentioned when I started, don't get caught up on the details of what these buildings look like because ultimately, the development community is going to determine what those are. And if the development community says, wow, this is a tech-oriented facility, you know, that's what it's going to be. What we would say is make sure that there's a mix. Make sure that you have office, that you have tech and residential. Because the one thing that we learned loud and clear, you know, if you look at the research triangle or any of those around the country, they're scratching their head going right now, gosh, all we did was tech. We should have done residential. And now we've created traffic because now everyone has to drive in and that sort of thing. So I would play to your strengths, let the market do its thing. You know, that's why we show those different design examples. You know, as long as you follow those cardinal rules, you know, as long as those are met, you know, whatever that use is, it should be accommodated by, you know, the transit-oriented development standards.
Before I turn the floor back over to the Chair, I have one additional question. If you could go to your page 11 or page 31 in the presentation you just had, and what I'm looking for is the Kenny Gate area, if you would. And, and question for staff as that's being pulled up. Did, was Offit consulted on this?
Yes, it has been discussed with Offit. This is an idea that's been discussed over recent years with Offit, particularly in regards to public transportation, so.
Their preferences, Kenny Gate?
I don't know that that was discussed at length with them. I think, as Mr. Bassan has indicated, you know, over time, you know, some of these, these stations may move a little bit. Obviously, with Offit, there's security issues, so that's something that has to be worked through. They're definitely willing to take a look at it. They're definitely willing to make something happen. Ultimately, whether it'll be Kenny Gate or, you know, something different, that remains to be seen. But they definitely were consulted and do like the idea of a multimodal corridor.
In fact, we, we had pushed for Myers Gate because it's closer to the headquarters. It's much more urban in nature. And during those discussions, as Tammy said, you know, we met with them on a couple of different occasions, they pushed back on that. And so they said Kenny Gate was, at least right now, their preferred. But the thing, I think the big positive out of all that discussion was that there was a lot of talk about, for this to be successful, there's things that the base needs to do as well. And that would be some kind of internal shuttle system. Because you're right, that's pretty isolated from things. And if, you know, Airmen can't get to the station areas, you know, it's not going to be successful. So, so they recognize that there's things that they would need to do as well.
Okay, I appreciate those comments. And I wanted to frame that context because Kenny Gate's a little problematic for me. I, I think it's wonderful we're doing Offit and particularly if Offit returns to its pieces our profession in 1970s and we go from 7,000 employees to 20,000. This sort of thing would be kind of reminiscence of the base, how it looked in World War II with that many people, which worked real well. The question I've got though is, we've got 42,000 cars on 370. And as they all head east in the morning to get on Kennedy Freeway, this doesn't leave them an easy option to use the BRT. It doesn't leave them an easy option to park their car at Kenny Gate and ride north to stops and go to their job. They're going to have to get on Kennedy Freeway. So if, if you're already a resident of Bellevue and you haven't moved in these areas, this really offers no advantage as I see it because there's no real place particularly for Kenny Gate. And I'm really thinking 370 not only as you head east to get on Kennedy Freeway in the morning, but if you live in east Bellevue, because this is a spine concept, I don't know how you get people from the east of Bellevue to Kenny Gate to go to work. And depending on how you read the demographics, a lot of people would like to find the BRT more affordable than taking a car. And so I'm conflicted, but I don't know that Kenny Gate really addresses the rest of Bellevue and 370 and 42,000 cars.
It, it definitely does not. So within transit, there's, there's two models that people look at. One is basically the locational aspect and that's, you know, metro, try that in Omaha. Let's get a line within, you know, a quarter mile of every resident. And that failed miserably and they've gone back in, they're picking corridors. The other one is the frequency model. And it's like, you got to pick your poison, find out what makes the most sense. So this really follows that. So, you know, you can't bring transit to everyone. You've got to pick where you want. And, you know, there's people that probably moved to east Bellevue, you know, kind of the old town area. They don't have an interest in that kind of transit. You know, hopefully, there's, you know, ways that they could cycle there if they wanted to. But this really begins to capture what transit does is people who want to move in around those nodes. So, so it's hard to retrofit a community to accept this. The goal is you build it in place and those that truly want to ride that come to those station areas.
I tend to, I see your point and I tend to, tend to see how illuminated it is. But for the other, if this area, if all these were built out fully 10,000, 15,000 people and the other 60,000 people of Bellevue can't use it. And the people to the southwest of Bellevue, which would be an additional question before I yield the floor is, you know, does this anticipate it to slow the growth in southwest Bellevue? And, and as this develops or not?
Yeah. I mean, the ultimate long-term goal is that, you know, development strings out along the entire Fort Crook Road corridor. Because this is the tool to cause that change. You know, right now, nothing's causing that change. So, you know, ideally, you start developing at each of those nodes. And then as this gets more and more used and expanded and there's other, you know, connections within the metro, then you start filling in those missing pieces between those station areas. And that's where that real opportunity comes. And that goes back to, you know, Bellevue's growth will be capped, you know, 35 years in the future. Then what? You've got to start setting this framework up now to start accommodating that. Because we all know that growth will fill in, you know, it's, you're not the only city. Omaha has, I think, 20 to 25 years of growth left. So everyone's facing these challenges. So as a community, how do you, how do you set that framework? Because every community is really in that boat. And if you don't create that framework, you know, then it's at your peril for, you know, how do you, you know, survive moving forward? Your, your, your tax base stagnates and everything else, so.
Yeah, Omaha hasn't been particularly clear about it, but they have a 30-30, 20 or 30-30, 30 plan depending on which document you read. And in that document, it calls for 30,000 new residents back downtown Omaha. I, I would really be reluctant to approve a plan that takes them from Bellevue.
That takes them from Bellevue?
Yeah.
No, I mean, so the metro area is going to grow significantly. So the goal is, how do you create a framework in Bellevue that helps you attract your percentage share just like every other community is? So, you know, Omaha is, officially it's 30-30, 20. We wrote that document. And it's, you know, they know in order to succeed, they've got to create that framework. That's why they're doing the streetcar. Honestly, Council Bluffs, they're looking at streetcar right now. They're doing everything in their power. How do they get the streetcar line that doesn't even exist in Omaha yet across the river? So if you look at all these communities, they're all, you guys are, everyone's in the same boat. How do you plan out ahead 20 years, create that framework and create the system to get you there so that you're well positioned in the future?
Thanks for your patience. I may have a few questions later on, but thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Ritz?
Along kind of the same lines as Mr. Jacobson, but not the same thought is, I feel like we missed a little bit of a missed opportunity on these stop placements of, doesn't the city trying to help develop a kind of a little industrial park at the Cape Heart Interse- and Fort Crook intersection? Which would then, if you put a station there, would facilitate Offit doing a shuttle service in and out from there through their Stratcom gate? Just as, you know, food for thought that I know that the city on the, that'd be northwest corner of that intersection, yep, right, nope, yep, north, right?
Farther Cape Heart, right?
Yep. So the northwest corner of that intersection, because north is left on there. I believe that the city has been trying to develop some commercial activity there. So I just feel like this may be a missed opportunity to put a station there and then move the Kenny Station, Gate Station to the lead on the other side of 370, which would avoid the traffic congestion in the morning to and from Offit as they're trying to get to 75, but also facilitate kids going to the lead center that you are much more an expert at transportation than I am. I'm, I live in Old Town, so I drive that. I'm just giving you my food for thought on it. I'm particularly excited about the Herman Drive Station just because I think that that plus the Bellevue University is a great fit for those. Mr. Jacobson, I see this as like a spine through Bellevue that can later be developed to go east-west. Say over 370 that could develop a line from one of these stations to Old Town Bellevue to allow to allow the older residents in Old Town to jump a bus, come over, switch to another bus, go all the way up to Omaha, not have to have a car. I grew up in Hawaii where you could go any spot on the island in two stops. So I think this is a great opportunity, great thought. And, um, like I said, the only thought I had was that we had a little bit of a missed opportunity potential with that, um, intersection there.
And I I would say, as previously mentioned, you know, this is kind of the the high-level plan. Um, obviously, we want to keep those stops along the corridor. Um, that's the whole idea around this type of development. But over time, um, and as we work with Metro and how that BRT line, um, will look ultimately, I think, yes, there will be some shifting. Is this exactly where it will land? Not sure. Maybe, maybe not. Um, but at least gives us an idea of the potential. And then we will go from there. Um, and yeah, you know, to speak to your earlier comments about, you know, the industrial development farther to the south, um, with the plenty sanitation near Fort Fairview Road and Fort Creek Road, um, there may be an opportunity to push that transit station farther to the south, particularly with what the city is envisioning and planning at Highway thirty-four and seventy-five. So we may be able to expand this and create, you know, even more of an opportunity with that BRT line in the future. And this gives us kind of the tools and flexibility to do that.
Yep. And and I think a good analogy, um, to all this is, this will change. Really, really what this plan is all about is is setting the city's vision, uh, getting Planning Commission and City Council to support it. That signals Metro and MAPPA, the city's intent. Um, so just two days ago, um, you know, we're we're doing the streetcar in Omaha. I did the feasibility study, kind of which this is, for the Omaha Streetcar back in two thousand and five. Um, since then, stops have shifted around probably five or six times. As recently as this week, they're in flux. So so really, this is that vision. And then as you get into those layers of detail, as this continues to advance, you'll fine-tune those to make sure that everything syncs up, you know, the way it should be, so.
I guess question partially for staff may be first. I remember when we adopted the Fort Creek Plan in two thousand and eight, and we've been criticized. And the city has been criticized since then when we don't follow the plan, when applications come forward. So, Mr. Bassan, when you say that, hey, don't get caught up in the details because it's going to change. I agree it's going to change, but ultimately, if we adopt the plan, isn't the goal that Planning Commission and City Council, as development opportunity come forward, we follow the plan?
Mm-hmm. What what I would say is kind of the macro as it relates to the transit, that's what's going to shift. The reason we did that that last section, which is on that incremental development, that's where you've got to be rock solid. If you if you stray from that and start allowing suburban development patterns on the corridor, that's going to be at your detriment because you're not going to create that framework that's transit supportive. So if I can say, if there's something that you should be locked solid on, it's make those buildings front the street, put the parking to the rear, to the side, those sorts of things. Those are absolutely critical. Because each time you don't do that, that further erodes the viability of transit along this corridor.
The the thing I would add to is, as, you know, any changes of zone come in, obviously, if, you know, this plan is adopted, then most definitely, we're going to have to take a look at whether or not, um, those changes are in the best interests and, um, are going to fit into this overall vision. Um, and I would agree ultimately, um, if any changes of zone are done or, uh, building permits are issued, things like that, the city does what it can. Um, you know, say, the the zoning's already in place and there's no site plan approval, anything like that. Um, it's at that point where, you know, the planning department, we would have to work with the developer and, you know, show them the plan, indicate the overall vision and facilitate those design guidelines. Also, the other thing that we will need to do, if the plan's adopted, we're going to have to amend the zoning ordinance, obviously, to allow for the transit-oriented development, also to, um, put these specific guidelines in place. You know, the three or four items that Mr. Bassan mentioned. So if this plan is adopted, we will have work to do in regards to the zoning ordinance. Um, I'm also hoping to get, uh, money into the budget for, uh, to completely overhaul our comp plan in the next year, which would align nicely with this. Um, that'll give us further opportunity to, um, update our future land use and our vision and get the two documents in in sync and in agreement.
I have a additional question, if I might.
Yes, go ahead.
These various, uh, transit-oriented development or development-oriented transit areas, uh, kind of require, uh, as you've presented it, the BRT to be in existence. Uh, if this was done, if there was no BRT and this was just development areas, point development areas, the success versus not, uh, you know, right now, uh, with the history of Kennedy Freeway and and ultimately how it changed Bellevue, uh, commercially and and retail-wise, does the, uh, BRT necessary to make these retailers? Can you go into that a little bit more?
No, I I think you've hit on something really important. So we always say, if if BRT, development follows transit investment. So if you look at BRT, and and when I say BRT, it's typically first-class BRT lines, designated, you know, lanes for that transit vehicle or rail in the ground. That's what is a catalyst for development to occur. People always say, well, just put rubber tires on it and make it a bus. And I say, look around any city and look at all the development that sprung up around bus lines. And people say, oh, wait, it didn't happen. So I think to your point is, you need that first-class transit investment because development does not follow bus lines. It follows investment in that transit. Um, because that proves to the developer that that is not going to move and shift anywhere. So I think kind of summing up your point is, without BRT, you're going to keep seeing what you have along the corridor right now.
A a follow-on question to that is, I, uh, participate in Heartland twenty fifty RPAC and various other groups. We've looked in a number of cities that that have a lot of this sort of transportation. And and while I'm impressed with much of it, one of the things I always walk away with is, uh, Plano, Texas, San Diego, uh, Vancouver, Calgary, it it doesn't matter any of the cities, that sometimes these, uh, TOD locations, the the retail tends to be coffee shops. And the retail development tends to be where they park their car and they leave. And there's not ultimately a lot of money spent. And even the people that live in high-rise apartments tend to park their cars in the the TOD parking lot because it's better than parking in front.
That's more of a management issue.
Of where they live. But but my point is not to turn these into big parking lots for people to come and go. How do we, I mean, your thoughts on that?
Yep. No, i- it's important. Um, the challenge we have right now in the metro is transit's not very good. I mean, it's got its challenges. Yeah, we're getting better. The the BRT, you know, on God tree is a really great first step. Until we make additional steps, everyone still needs to own a car. It's just the way it is. So, you know, some of these dense urban cities that you see, you can live your entire life and get anywhere with transit. So we're working there. Metro's doing a phenomenal job, kind of moving the needle. You know, they're continually trying to increase funding for transit. So until we get there, you're always going to have to accommodate the car. That's why on each of these suburbs, you know, we show parking because, you know, we're going to need it. Uh, but the goal is hopefully twenty years from now, the, you know, it's a much more robust transit environment. And I think we're getting there. Like I said, um, you know, Metro's doing an absolutely phenomenal job. MAPPA's supporting, you know, with that's happening in some of those key corridors in the metro, uh, it's it's going to start shifting. But in that interim, it's it's tough unless you're right on a transit line to reduce those parking ratios. I think there's only one location, um, Farnham Street in the Blackstone District, um, where the developers are willingly going below one stall per unit. Um, and, you know, with streetcar happening, I'm already talking to developers, they're plummeting their parking ratios. So we're going to get there, but you have to be right on a first-class transit line to make that happen.
One one more thing about Kennedy Freeway, and and maybe I may ask, uh, Commissioner Ritz to chime in on this. We we live at opposite ends of three seventy, basically. I'm I'm west of Kennedy Freeway and I I think it's safe to say he's east of Kennedy Freeway. Kennedy Freeway has just turned into a huge barrier to tie the city together. Uh, you've got Fort Creek and then you've got Kennedy Freeway, then you've got the railroad and a little bit of aircraft approachway. Um, this sometimes seems to me that it's just another additional barrier between tying the two parts of the the city together. I don't know how in the future this additional thing would would help keep the city united between an east Bellevue and a west Bellevue.
But east-west is a challenge. I mean, you're you're right. You've got several, um, you know, the the landing zones. You've got the the creek, the floodway. You've got two highways, one very active, one not so much in Fort Creek Road. So east-west is tough, but I think the goal is make it be the bind, that that tie that binds north-south. Because that's really what it's going to do. It's going to unite, you know, it's southern stop all the way in with the metro area. And and focus on that because there's not much you can do physically to connect things east-west across all those infrastructure investments and so forth.
Thank you. So I guess the part I keep noodling on and I can't figure out is what we do with this plan if we adopt it. As I read it, I liked the first half that talks about the nodes and the traffic and the BRT and all that would be great. How we pay for that, I guess that hasn't been brought up yet. To your point, you've been working on that in Omaha since two thousand and five and they're still trying to figure that out, right? But my concern when we adopt a plan is it becomes something we're bound to as we get applications coming in. And again, you mentioned you got to be rock solid. It's the back half of this that I don't like at all in terms of what it shows that we are going to have to probably reject development that comes in if it doesn't fit these nodes and how we're, again, I that's where I'm, I'm, uh, a little consternation on don't get caught up with the details. And yet, uh, th- those are the details we have to plan to if we adopt this plan.
Yep. So I I think a couple of things. You know, the the high level is, this sets your vision, as we said before. This is the city's vision. Um, Metro and MAPPA absolutely think that's critical, that the city brings forth a vision. Once that is approved, if if Planning Commission approves it and City Council approves it, you know, MAPPA is already ready to fund, uh, you know, their their mini grant to take the next steps of study. It's triggers a series of things. Then Metro will know, okay, you know, Bellevue's very serious. So these are all things kind of procedural on the transit opportunity. And that's all necessary ultimately to bring in federal funding and everything else that will pay for the transit investment. Then there's the development side. I, you know, it, that's that's all private sector. I mean, you guys aren't paying for, you know, any of this development. There's things you can do. You can say, let's do a small area plan around a key stop area and do the planning effort and bring that forward to the community and try to encourage the developers to respond. But again, they're not going to respond until they know that that transit happens first. So it's kind of what happens first, the chicken or the egg. You've got to get the transit going. In order to get the transit going, uh, those entities want to see that the bu- city of Bellevue is committed to this. Once they know you're committed, then you can start advancing, you know, make, putting that transit into the ground. So I'd say that's first. Um, and then, you know, it's it's, you know, there is some cost in terms of doing, you know, design guidelines, updating and comprehensive plans, that sort of thing. Uh, but those are going to be critical, um, in order to both kind to kind of telegraph the city's commitment to the development community that you're serious about this, but also the commitment to those other agencies that want to help move this forward.
So from what you've said, can't we then stop this on page thirty-three? In other words, the front end is this transportation node that we need to adopt that says, here's how we think we can revitalize Fort Creek Road, tie into the metro, MAPPA, all of those things. Why do we have to go past page thirty-four which then starts to tie our hands on plans that, and I'm happy to go through several of them that aren't?
It, I think the reasoning for that is vision. Those agencies want to see what the vision is and need to be able to say, I mean, if you don't have that there, they're like, well, why do we want to put this transit investment here if it's going to be a suburban vision where transit's not going to succeed? So the two are locked together. You have to have that vision and that pedestrian-oriented mixed-use walkable urbanism for the transit to succeed. So again, don't get stuck on those nodes, you know, start thinking, okay, how do, as as I said before, those individual projects, how do we make those as transit conducive as possible? No cost there, except for those updated plans and so forth. Um, but this is the trigger that then tells those other agencies that, okay, now Bellevue's ready. We can start working hand-in-hand to get this going.
Mr. Ackley, I was going to say, in my mind, if the plan's adopted ultimately by City Council, I think one of the first steps we would take is in regards to the zoning ordinance, um, to get those, um, transit-oriented development guidelines in there. Also to deal, you know, perhaps do a Fort Creek Road corridor overlay, something to that nature. Um, and get those guidelines in place so that whatever development comes in, albeit, you know, commercial, if the property's already zoned, commercial, residential, whatever, we have those guidelines in place so that even if it wouldn't develop, um, exactly as the plan shows, obviously, again, because, to your point, we have Fort Creek Road and Cornhusker Road, um, you know, the northwest corner already zoned commercial. So if a developer comes in tomorrow, it doesn't require change of zone, doesn't necessarily require site plan approval. They can come in and develop. But if we have those guidelines in place and to the zoning ordinance about, um, design and, um, you know, having that walkability component there, then we at least get, you know, that part of the overall vision taken care of.
So I think I hear what you're saying, Tammy, is that this this is far more than a vision. I mean, our discussion tonight is not a, let's approve a vision and convert it to a plan at a later time. Our our agenda item tonight is to approve this as a plan and and start forming the foundation of some concrete.
And it, yes, in my mind.
Logically, outfall.
Right. In my mind, it has no teeth unless it's approved. And to Mr. Ackley's point, you know, once we have that approved document, then again, you know, there's there's going to be some shifts within, but we commit to that overall, you know, vision and the design and the the nature of of the corridor.
And Bellevue's not engaged with federal agencies at this point for funding for this plan?
Funding is already, uh, starting to be pursued on the city side of things. Um, you know, our our Public Works Department, um, our different, um, staff have already been looking into what types of funding would be possible. Um, you know, again, those conversations have been had with MAPPA, with MAPPA, with Metro, just at the preliminary stages. You know, no, there's no application out at the moment. Um, but, you know, as Mr. Bassan has pointed out, um, MAPPA is committed to, you know, further study and potentially grant money to help, um, help implement this overall vision.
One one small follow-on. I I know this was, uh, uh, presented to the Complete Streets, which is a group of public, public people that participate in the Complete Streets program. Has this had any other public, uh, process, involvement process, other than Complete Streets, where the public's had a chance to comment, other than those that came tonight from the public to to present, to participate?
Uh, Mr. Bassan can probably speak to that a little bit better. Um, there was, um.
We had some stakeholder involvement during the workshop. But the the approach was this is an update of the previous plan, so it doesn't stray far. I mean, it was, that was walkable urbanism. This is probably the newest input was the BRT component to it. So so that's why it's not as extensive of outreach as normally would be if you were doing a a plan for an area for the first time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just something to talk about with, from what Chi- Mr. Jacobson said earlier. Right now, Fort Creek between, um, north of Cornhusker, it's pretty much a highway that separates east and west. And that was a big issue we had when we put the school in up on, I think, Child's Road. Switching to, so limit this from six lanes to three is going to bring those neighborhoods east and west better together, a lot easier to allow more development of the west side that's kind of blocked on both sides right now by Fort Creek and by Kennedy Freeway. Because you can't run across six lanes of traffic. And if you do run, you're really running. So, um, this plan actually is, solves a big issue that this, that we had a couple of last year when it came to that school and allows, I think, the elimination of a barrier of east-west of that Fort Creek Corridor on that section. So I didn't even think about that until you mentioned Kennedy Freeway and east-west Bellevue. But I think that this might develop the section between Kennedy and Fort Creek better. Um.
And in fact, if we go to that one image that show the stations, you can see that crosswalk and that kind of from six down to three. That, uh, up one.
Fifteen, I think.
That nineteen, is that it? Oh, wait, yeah.
Yeah. So I just, you know, we solve a problem that was a big issue for many people on this board a couple of months ago. Um. And then for Mr. Ackley's point, I don't know if there's much development that's going to happen that we're going to be res- resisting along that Fort Creek Bou- Boulevard right now because. because there's not a lot of stops, there's not a lot of places to stop. It's kind of been stagnant for a while. Now, I don't know if that's just a, a factor of the market, hasn't put enough pressure to infill that or that everyone, myself included, sees Fort Crook as a highway. Get through it. It's a great way to get around the Kennedy Freeway construction zones right now. That's what it is. So I like this plan a lot because I think that it switches Kennedy or Fort Crook from being more of a highway to more of a main thorough, more of a Dodge street that we can develop. So just my thought process.
One, one, one question to build on that, if I might, is that throughout your whole presentation, you've talked about BRT and you've talked about cars that are still gonna be in existence, like that or not. But bicycles and walking are enhanced with this, with this plan. Two types of vehicles, I guess, kind of come to mind to ask additional questions on. One is that Fort Creek Road in this area, especially to the north, tends to have a lot of truck traffic. Not enough to warrant studies or any sort of traffic calming devices. But we have some commercial areas in that place now that rely on trucks as light manufacturing type of things. And so trucks kind of fit into this still?
Yep. So one thing with any urban development is you still have to get goods and deliveries. So lane widths are all twelve, I think twelve feet for the most part. Twelve feet accommodates a bus vehicle, so everything, yep, is, is accommodated. And our, and our traffic engineers said, from a, you know, a, a volume perspective, with mixed traffic, you know, that level of service C, you know, is, is perfectly adequate for that.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess for my part, Mr. Ritz, I agree. I, I like the concept of the transportation corridor portion of this. But I don't like the second half of this where unless we put some specific language in here that says, as a Planning Commission and city, we are not bound by the design concepts and things that are planned for around these stops. Again, after the two thousand and eight Fort Crook plan was adopted, Ms. Palm, you know better than I. How often were we criticized or the city criticized because we weren't following the plan? We paid a lot of money for the plan and we didn't follow the plan because the things that were conceptualized weren't what were coming before us. And again, it seems like this transportation has to come first before we would be bound by better development of each of those nodes. And I guess to give an example of what I'm talking about, if, if any of you think I'm just rambling here, the one that's the Fort Creek Road plan, you know, that's been designed for multifamily and ten years it's been for sale. It's not happening. I think we're gonna see here in the next year, all of that's gonna be commercial corridor. And as Ms. Palm indicated, all that's currently zoned BG. If you go to Bellevue University, the Herman Drive Station stop, I talked to Mary Hawkins today and asked if she knew anything about the plans that were going through. She said she did not. They own everything north of Herman Drive right now. Everything shown there is not what Bellevue University has any intent of doing. And south of Herman Drive, which is shown as mostly townhomes, again, that'll be dependent on getting someone to sell that land. But again, next to a major university, you're probably gonna have probably some multifamily, but more retail and things that, again, I don't want to get locked into anybody coming to us and say you're not following the plan. Seems like we should somewhere have some language that says this is not binding on Planning Commission and City Council in terms of this second half of the package. Third one is, and you indicated it, your notes are ready. Doug, I mean, we basically just approved all of the things south of Capeport to be light industrial. And we're showing a big residential development down there. That's not what's gonna happen.
And we made, we did make note of that in the document.
Well, there's a note with a big drawing showing, here's the big, I mean, at least on those three nodes, it seems like, A, let's, let's make them reflect what's actually coming that we know of. And B, does it make sense to you or would you have an objection if we had some language that said, Planning Commission and City Council, you're not bound by this plan with regard to development? We are agreeing that we're gonna try to work towards the transportation piece of it.
I would add that you should say you're trying to work towards the vision piece of it as well. I mean, we can put that language in and you guys, you guys can craft that language. But I, I think it would be important to say that this is the vision we anticipate, you know, no one is bound.
Being nodes along a transportation route.
Yep.
No detail on the nodes other than here's what it could be.
This is what it could be. Yeah. Yep. Walkable urbanism. I mean, that, that's the key because that's what's gonna make this thing work.
So again, I'm not beating you up for saying this is terrible, but I think this is a good first draft. And I guess I would like us to hold it over and, and get a little more flesh on the bone here. And I'd be happy to work with you or someone else if, again, we can work on some of that language. Because I just remember back to two thousand and eight when that plan was adopted and we would regularly get beat up on, why aren't you following the plan? Reason you adopt the plan is to follow it. And with the back half of this showing all of this kind of development, I know for a fact, we're not gonna, we're not gonna have that. So I like the concept, but not the detail where people are gonna say, hey, city, why aren't you following that?
Yep. Well, I think you guys tell us what you want in there. I mean, this is, I mean, this is a very common approach. Different cities respond differently based on things like that. So some cities are fine with it, some aren't. So, you know, I think that's a sensitivity here, especially with the previous Fort Creek Road studies. So if you want to craft, you know, some messaging on that, we can, you know, we can add that.
I have a few comments myself. I actually participated in the things he's talking about, so I can give a little insight. It wasn't necessarily public, but it was definitely some stakeholders. The base was there. Beardmore was there, some of the big, bigger businesses along there. I was there on behalf of the, of the Chamber of Commerce, as I said on that, on that board. So there was definitely twenty to thirty people, three nights. I was there two to three nights. So, I mean, we definitely felt like we had good input. You know, the base is very adamant, it's not gonna go where you guys want it. That's why it ended up where it was at. I agree with everybody. I think we missed Capeport, especially because your, your thing shows that the plan is talking about going east-west at Capeport. It would just be a logical place. I know you said that we can move those, but I think Capeport is a very logical place for, uh, for a transit center, especially if the plan is to go, you know, west of a plan in that way. I want to get a little bit into the details because we keep talking about vision. I want to understand a little bit. I drive Fort Creek Road almost daily from Capeport north to three seventy. And I want to understand, why did we switch? And I know that night I was there, we talked a lot about, you put the buses here and here and traffic in the middle, you put the traffic here and the buses over here. Why did we switch? Or what's recommendation? Why, why north of three seventy, we put all the pedestrians and the buses over on the?
Yep. You had different lane configurations. So there's north three seventy, there's six lanes, three in each direction. South, there's two lanes in each direction.
Yep.
So that combined with the drop and decrease in traffic warranted changing those sections up.
Could you, could you pull up seventeen? I'm just, I mean, I, I think you could still get, and here's where my brain is going. We know from Capeport to three seventy, there can be no development on the east side, right? The base is there, there's never been any development there. So why would we want to put all the bu- if our goal is to get people to be able to walk to the, to the BRT, why wouldn't we put all the buses on the west side and keep all the traffic along the base? Why, why do we separate the, and, and another thing I'm concerned about is you only have one lane of traffic. I can tell you, there are concerns about people coming off of three seventy to getting, you know, to getting onto the base. You'll have, if it's one lane, when you get off three seventy to go south, you'll be backed up all the way past Kennedy. Because it backs up now with two lanes going into the base. So I'm just trying to think through, why didn't we just do, you know, on the, on the east side, it could be two tr- two car lanes with a turn lane. And then, and then the west side could be two buses and, and that.
One thing we were trying to do is keep it affordable and work within the existing pavement configurations. So that was a key driver in all this. That way we wouldn't have to add lanes or decrease lanes. So we began to really struggle with the widths there and having to add. And, and it's a variable shoulder width right there as well. So that was one of the challenges. And then part of it, I mean, there, there was kind of the consensus amongst kind of the transit folks and the city in terms of what everyone thought, you know, from a functional perspective would work best. So that's how that decision was made. I know there is many people who thought differently. But that was kind of the solution that was continuously advanced in terms of kind of from a functional perspective.
I, I think one lane is a mistake in that, in from Capeport to three seventy, I think it needs to be more than one lane. Maybe it's your limit, what'd you call it, limited, what'd you call it where the, the traffic and the buses are together? What did you call that?
I mean, a shared operation or a mixed operation.
Yeah, that would at least allow.
Well, and that's what, I mean, so you got, I mean, if, if traffic were to back up, you gotta remember that those bus vehicles are coming every, one every twelve to fifteen minutes.
Right.
So you do have capacity if it, you know, if you got into a situation where you really need to get a lot of throughput there. I mean, you wouldn't want to encourage that, but I think it's a misnomer looking at that. There's not gonna be a bus vehicle there, you know, every single time you drive down there.
But when it says bus only, I would say traffic can't be in that lane, correct?
It, I mean, it depends on how you, you can, you can, you can do it that, you know, transit only, transit priority. You can put timing on it. There's a lot of different things that you can do, so.
Yeah, I would just recommend we look at, and I'm sure the engineer said that, I just know there's a lot of traffic down there and I know we don't have a lot of development. And we've all sat here and know there's development coming along the west side of, of Fort Crook there. And I, I, I don't think we have enough setup with that cross-section right there to get that done. And that's with today's traffic that I drive every day, so. Other than that, I love it. I'm gonna pronounce this wrong, but I'm sure you're aware of the, is it the Monana? Monan or Monanan Trail, it's east of Indianapolis. Do you, you familiar with that trailer, trail? This reminds me a lot of that. Those of you that don't know that, basically Indianapolis is the core and they wanted to connect two or three suburbs to the north and they basically did this exact same thing. And it's beautiful, it's amazing. And actually, in that area, they call it like waterfront property. People want to live up against the, this trail system. And that, since they don't have water, obviously, it's a big thing. But they, houses along that trail are more expensive than houses that are not because they want to be able to get Indianapolis. So I think from a vision, this is, this is great.
Cleveland, if you look up Cleveland, Cleveland Health Center line, same thing. Minneapolis has several corridors that are BRT only. And you're right, they're, they're, they're key spines that are investments because it's the address people want to be on.
Any other, yeah, go ahead.
Doug, you've been working on this for a while, obviously. If we were to maybe get some folks on Planning Commission that wanted to sit down with you and flesh this out a little more before it goes to City Council, what kind of timing do you think we'd need if we were to hold this over to?
It depends. What's that? Yeah, are you trying to hit that August meeting or not?
Oh, I can't imagine because.
Probably not gonna happen. Because that agenda, the second August meeting is the sixteenth, that agenda gets finalized August eighth. So we're only talking a couple of weeks. That wouldn't be enough time for HTR.
To go back through this commission, this Planning Commission with the revised plan.
If it's, I see a couple of different scenarios. So if there's significant revisions, then yes, I think that's the scenario we're in. If it's a situation where the consensus is from Planning Commission to leave the overall plan intact, but add language that Mr. Ackley was referencing, you know, somewhere in the plan about, you know, the high-level vision of the actual transit centers. I, I think that could be done prior to City Council without coming back through the commission. But any, anything more significant?
We have to talk about that too because, you know, we're at a point right now where we probably have to get a contract amendment for something like that. So I would recommend that there's the, the language change. But to go into a redesign at this point in time, you know, I think it's gonna present some challenges.
Tammy, are there budget implications for, if we, if we hold this over? Obviously, you guys are in a budget window. That's due in September, I believe, to the state, right? So does that, does this, if we hold this over, does it affect that for next year's funding?
I mean, if we get in a situation where we're talking about, you know, contract implications, I think probably what administration would want would just be a recommendation from this body, one way or another. You know, do what you all are comfortable with as far as tweaking some language, but moving it out. You know, complete overhaul, redesign, things of that nature. Again, as Mr. Basson said, that's gonna kick us into a whole different scenario. And I, I do know that this plan is a priority for administration, so I know that they want to keep it moving along.
So I have a question for all that, for, for staff. I've been thinking along the lines of Mr. Ackley, which I, I agree with. And, and I don't know, at least I don't speak for Mr. Ackley, but I'm not thinking a major rewrite. I'm very supportive of, of the first thirty-three pages. And I'm, I'm thinking, is it more of a transition issue that we have to page thirty-four through, through sixty-two? If, if I could throw out a brainstorm of saying something like on page thirty-three, it was a redevelopment vision, would that bind us to pages thirty-four on if we changed it and accepted the first pages one through thirty-two as a plan and page thirty-three on as a, as an illustrated vision?
Examples.
Examples of what could happen? And then that maybe overcomes the consternation that Mr. Ackley and I as well share on, on pages thirty-four on.
We, we have a text blurb on the front pa- inside the front cover and maybe that just gets shifted.
Yeah, I, I just think right now, if, if we call the whole thing a plan, then.
Yeah, go, go one page down.
It says this document is a flexible tool, that blurb.
Yep.
Which presents the vision framework principles and guidelines for redevelopment. It is important to note that the physical design of buildings, open spaces, mobility corridors has not been determined. I mean, that, that's exactly what you're saying.
Thanks, Doug.
All right. So that highlighted part, it is important to note that the physical design of buildings, open spaces and mobility corridors has not been determined. That's what you're asking for. That exists in this. I think this gives you, I mean, we can move it to that front page of thirty-three or you can keep it there, but I, I don't know what states it more clearly than that. And that's why that goes in each and every one of our documents.
I, I don't know that, and again, I'm just brainstorming. I'm, I'm not that good at word smithing on the run, particularly in a well-done document that's sixty-two pages long. But if it was repeated on page thirty-three, I don't know if that eases any of the consternation any of the other commissioners may have.
I mean, the, the question is where the nodes are, where the stations are, which we've already said are kind of flexible because they're gonna do further studies, further traffic studies. They're gonna work with OFIT, everything like that. So my suggestion would be, let's make maybe a motion that says that we, you know, like this idea as a north-south concept, node configuration with the node location, station locations to be determined through further studies. It provide, moves it forward. It doesn't hamstring us into committing to something in any way other than that we like that Fort Crook is going to have a, um, switch to this BRT configuration. Then when we, then when the, the comprehensive plan gets updated and they decide where to rezone at, where to put these overlays at, that's when we can have the discussions of where these stations are. That's when we can commit to plans that we're gonna hold it when people come in front of us for approval. I mean, it sounds like we're all kind of on board with this as a concept of a north-south corridor that's gonna connect Omaha to Bellevue. We like the node configuration. We just don't want to commit ourselves to things that we can't.
I, I guess I would say, let's keep it simple. I, I think that that statement probably covers us. If it gives an additional layer of, you know, if it, if it would, if there's a compromise, maybe again, repeat the language in the overview that's given on page thirty-four. That revision could be made. And maybe that would be kind of a compromise that everyone could live with. I think, to your point, Eric, that probably says exactly what you just said.
Yeah. Or, I mean, maybe even just throw in the words, concept drawings on each of the specific stations to give it one more level for the legal beagles to be very, you know, the Child's Road Station on that page.
So here's your, here's your legal beagle, one sentence at it.
Okay.
Are we going back to the acknowledgement? If we could go back to the acknowledgement, Ms. Curry. The bold language. Here's what I would say. At the end of that, I would add, "And the examples of redevelopment is set forth herein is non-binding on the Planning Commission and City Council unless or until the mobility system contemplated in this plan comes to fruition." Is that offensive to you, Mr. Basson?
I think you're restraining yourself too much. I, I wouldn't even put until the mobility system comes into fruition because they're gonna continue to change on. I, I'm, I'm fine with that. But I'm thinking, I wouldn't even put that last piece on. I would just keep it open-ended. Because even once the mobility system comes on.
And more specific plans are then adopted by.
Yep.
Okay. I'll play with some language.
Okay.
But is anybody offended by something like that if we work that out in the next day or two? And again, I apologize. I'm the oldest. I've, I've somehow become the gray-haired guy on this commission. I distinctly remember in two thousand and eight, and Ron P-Tech, if you're listening, I'll give you a shout-out. We would regularly get baked in the paper on, hey, you just adopted another development on Fort Creek Road and you didn't follow the plan. Why the hell we spend all that money on the plan? And I don't want to have to turn somebody down who says, hey, I want to do this with the building. And we're going, oh, you don't, you don't follow the plan. And I don't want to have to turn somebody down who says, hey, I want to do this with the building, and we're going, oh, you don't, you don't follow the plan.
Yep.
How, how about this? Um, you know, staff can, uh, continue to have discussion with Mr. Ackley. But if you guys have that level of comfort, um, staff will work with H D R, will get some language in there prior to city council, moving forward to, you know, the effect of what Mr. Ackley just stated. That would be a way to move it forward and.
Yeah, I got one more thing. I'm not trying to find gears or, you know, wrenches thrown gears, but, um, question from, I can't remember who brought this up, but has this plan been reviewed by the police department? In terms of, will we need to update their code, their enforcements for what the rules of that red lines are?
I, I think that we cross that bridge when we come to it. Um, you know, obviously, this, the BRT line is not gonna happen next month.
No.
Six months from now, so potentially you're gonna have new staff at that point. So most definitely, there's gonna be an education component with that for not only law enforcement, but also citizens. Um, happens anytime, there's new signage, bike lanes, someone throws in a roundabout. Um, there's, there's gonna need to be that education piece, and so I think we're just gonna, we're just gonna have to continually deal with that, yep.
And it should not come as a surprise, because they were represented at the workshops.
And that makes me feel better knowing that they had a representative there.
Yep.
So.
As well as fire. We actually did it in the fire training center, so they were participants as well, yep.
And I think just sort of, you know, Mrs. Cusford sent an email to all of us. I believe all of her questions were addressed in the presentation or just in the conversations today. So I don't know if you saw it or not, Mrs. Cusford couldn't be here tonight, but she had some questions, but I think everything that she asked.
And, and I did pass those along to the consultants, so.
I think you covered most of them in your presentation, but just as she, if she does ask, I think we covered all her questions, so.
Cool.
All right, Mr. Ackley, you gonna whip something up for us here?
Not as part of a motion, but. I'd be happy to make a motion unless someone else would like to. But basically, the, the motions gotta include that we're gonna provide some additional language before it goes to city council, right?
I think it can be as simple as that, that, you know, the recommendation discussed tonight of the addition.
Commission's good with that.
Yeah.
Well, since Mr. Ackley is looking around for somebody to make a motion unless another commissioner is so inclined, I would, uh, make a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, Fort Crook, uh, plan as presented with additional wording that Mr. Ackley and staff and the consultant, uh, will work out. I don't know that there needs to any additional wording since it's a plan, so.
I think that's good.
Second.
All right, so Jacobson made the motion, Perrin seconded. Mr. Ackley's got some work to do. Please vote.
I keep getting an offline, and the little person next to my title is red with an X.
Nice. Good job, Mr. Arnie.
Looks like you're.
Yeah, you didn't expect it to be easy, did you? Coming here? You did a good job. No, it.
You've been working on this for what, a year?
Yeah.
Just in case.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the workshops were, yeah, almost a year. I mean, cause we did upfront work before that.
So, we're, we're seeing it for the first time, and obviously, we're the ones that end up hearing about it.
Oh.
Yep.
But it looks like you're back on, so hit that. Disconnect and reconnect, and then you should be okay.
I'm not the only one.
I think you probably sat, we sat idle too long. There you go, it's refreshing. Still doesn't like you.
I can't help that, I guess. Diana, did mine come in yet? It looks like it's still grinding, saying it's in process.
No, it did.
Good.
You're good.
Mine says that too.
Mine just popped up, so I was able to vote.
Yes.
Do you have to refresh the, the screen itself?
We had so much conversation, the system went to sleep.
All voted yes, motion carried.
All right, and once we get that language added, then this item will go to the city council for public hearing on August sixteenth of two thousand twenty-two.
And Mr. Basson, just for timing, um, Mr. Ackley, I'll probably discuss with you tomorrow if you're available.
I can send an email.
Okay, and then, um, I can, we can discuss the first part of the week?
I'll send some proposed language.
I'm, I'm gonna be overseas next week, but you have Andy, Andy will be the one to coordinate with, unless tomorrow, I'm around tomorrow, so.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your time.
All right, uh, so next we have item three D, request to approve the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-eight capital improvement plan. The applicant is the city of Bellevue, case number one seven two. Staff, any updates?
Um, just a couple of things that I want to discuss. So obviously, it's that fun time of year, again, where it's budget. Um, planning department, um, along with the budget process, we compile the, uh, capital improvement plan. Um, one thing I do want to say is the, the public hearing for the budget will happen August sixteenth. However, there is still some shuffling of items. Um, everything that is in the C I P is not able to be funded as you're looking at right now, particularly when it, um, comes to the upcoming fiscal year, twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, I don't have anything set in stone yet. Um, there, there will be some reorganization prior to the city council. But what you're looking at, um, for the most part is, is gonna be what it is. Where there will be some shuffling is, there's a lot of requests for vehicles. Um, right now, the city's having trouble getting vehicles. So that's kind of an easy one, where a lot of those vehicle requests, particularly with, um, fire, police, um, public works, some of those will get shifted back a year, um, just because, like I said, we can't get the vehicles anyway. So even if they get funded, you know, we had that happen last budget year, they're still not able to get the vehicles they were budgeted for. Um, the other big item that's going to move is the public works facility. Um, that's gonna get pushed back a year, is what it looks like. Um, right now, there's no immediate plans for a land purchase, anything of that nature. Um, if something would happen to fall into the city's lap, or the city would find that perfect, perfect piece of land um, prior to, um, the, you know, the upcoming budget year, um, then some accommodations could be made, but otherwise, that will get pushed back, and that will go, I think right now it's in twenty-two, twenty-three. That would go to twenty-three, twenty-four, and everything would get pushed back a year. So, uh, some, I just want you guys to be aware, don't be alarmed when it goes to city council and you say, wait a minute, that's not exactly what we looked at. But overall, the, i- it will generally stay the same. I just think some of those items, there's, there's ongoing discussions. Um, those discussions will probably continue on for the next week or so before every line item is solidified. Um, but just wanted you to, you folks to be aware of that. Otherwise, um, it's pretty typical of what you would normally see. Um, major projects, library renovation, um, some parks trail renovation. Also, a major one is the wastewater, uh, south lift station flood recovery improvements. Um, also finally starting to plan with infrastructure, um, on the south portion of our E T J and city limits. So, um, those are exciting things to have happen. With that, um, we can open the public hearing, and I can answer any questions.
Yeah, open public hearing. And I'll close the public hearing.
And nobody left.
All right, so commissioners, questions, comments, feedback?
One fine point for staff is, um, library renovations is in reference to past, present, future.
Correct, and I, I did, um, to your point, Mr. Jacobson, you had emailed me. What we're gonna do is, in the spreadsheet, we'll put the specific address, we'll put twenty-two oh-six. Um, you know, city has sold the old building, so, um, these all pertain to the twenty-two oh-six Longo Drive location.
Great, thank you, yeah. The, the question I'd raised with, uh, with staff was, the, as we transitioned into a new library location. It wasn't clear to me in the spreadsheet what we were, refer, which location were we referring to, so I had, asked for some clarification in the document.
Questions for staff, economic development, I notice goes out for three years at seven hundred fifty thousand a year, and then it stops in the remainder of the years. Is there any backdrop on not continuing that?
I think typically it's been included every year. Angela, did Rich ever provide any clarification on?
No, he hasn't sent anything, like even on the new updates, there wasn't anything for that, for the upcoming years.
I, I can, yeah, I can address that. I think it may be an oversight more than anything, because we have been including it every year.
Yep.
Um, and shout out to our finance director, um, he always calls the outliers a wish list. And so his main focus is, you know, typically the first two, three years, so it's probably just an oversight. It's, it's always typically been included, so I will make note of that moving forward.
Yeah, I would ask it to be included for twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight.
We can make that update.
Who else, questions? Mr. Ritz?
I see recreation is nothing. And then my question is, is American Heroes Park development, um, that plan reflected in here at all? I know that's a, I think, a four-phase plan with a tower, a splash pad. I didn't see it, but I'm not gonna say I didn't miss it. It's a long document, so.
I think basically, the, the, the overall engineering and design, um, that's probably something that will be looked at. Um, again, you know, we go out to the departments and ask them to, you know, what they want to put in, um, at this point. I don't believe that there is anything major for American Heroes Park that could change. Um, as we, um, get through this fiscal year and you guys see a new C I P next year. I know, um, as with any city, you know, the directors were asked to prioritize and, um, only look at items that, you know, were immediately necessary for the upcoming year. So I think probably part of the city's plan too is for American Heroes Park, I know, is to look at outside funding. Um, and I think that there needs to be a, a grace period where that happens, and that probably is this next year. Um, there's several different things that staff have talked about that would be federal opportunities, local opportunities. Um, once we have an opportunity to explore those, um, you may see something different next year, once there's a plan for some outside funding. Because obviously, that's a large price tag for the city to take on itself, so it's gonna have to also come from outside funding.
Hope that makes sense. It's basically, it's still kind of up in the air on how it's gonna be paid for and what the plan is going to be.
Correct.
Um, then my last general comment was something that we can, that I thought about while reading on the, uh, development in Old Town for the, for, uh, and that is whether or not, um, infrastructure needs to be looked at, especially in Old Town area that's got old sewer, old water, and maybe proactive plan on systematically replacing it. Cause I know that Old Town gets, uh, sewer collapses frequently now, and.
So there, there currently is, um, an outside engineering firm looking at that. Also, um, on the August sixteenth city council agenda, it is planned that we will have, um, an item on there for an engineering firm to come in and do engineering and design for, uh, infrastructure and street scape along the Mission Avenue corridor. So not only will that address aesthetics, but it will also address aging sewers, the need for stormwater, um, also, you know, detention, all of that. So that is in the works, and I would anticipate, once that is approved by city council on that August sixteenth agenda, then, um, we will hit the ground running with that.
I, I would just request they also look at water pressure and gas pressure availability to the residents, just cause, uh, it's a little inconsistent right now.
Got it.
Mr. Ritz, on page thirteen, I see in twenty twenty-four, they have some money set aside for American Heroes Park. I'm not sure what those other two line items are. It's only eighty thousand, so that's probably not all the development you're thinking of with water slide and things, but.
Page thirteen, you said? Oh, it's off by one. My page thirteen's actually page twelve.
It's, it's to install a new fountain at American Heroes Park.
If you go to fifteen, it gives you the description of what that is, Mr. Ackley.
Sure. Yep, and I saw that. I imagine that's the fountain inside of the lake.
Correct.
Okay. Right now, the American Heroes plan is really nice, got a big tower with elevator, splash pad, nature garden, um, permanent bathrooms, so, um, I really like going down to American Heroes, so I kinda try to keep an eye on that. I was just curious what that status was, so.
Question for, uh, staff, if I might. Um, with the, uh, motions we've passed tonight along, uh, Mission Avenue and the redevelopment that's moving forward, um, budgeting is inclusive, buried in various departments to work around that, not only for infrastructure, but for, uh, you know, a bike station and some of the stuff that we've been trying to work on, on the peripheral of any development in, in the downtown Bellevue area, which might include bike trail or bike path between here and American Heroes Park and that sort of stuff. Is, is that kind of included in the, the cash flows for the, uh, to support that project as it moves forward?
Correct. So that Old Town, street scape, infrastructure, those are all items that will be looked at because one of the priorities is going to be redesigning the roadway. Um, you know, changing things like, um, you know, not only aesthetics, but traffic flow. Um, perhaps diagonal parking, all of those items. So one of the things that will be looked at is yes. Um, as we change that, how do we address, you know, how is it more pedestrian friendly? How do we accommodate cyclists, all modes of transportation? So, um, obviously, the city has a complete streets ordinance, so that's something that will definitely be addressed as part of that project.
Great, thank you.
I just had a question on Thirty-Sixth Street, so if you looked here, just make sure I'm looking at this right, there's quite a bit of work over the next three years on Thirty-Sixth Street. So I'm looking at this right on page nine. Uh, Thirty-Sixth Street, Cornhusker to three seventy. It's like they're, they're doing engineering and design next year.
Mm-hmm.
At the same time, they're doing engineering and design of Thirty-Sixth Streets from Sheridan Road South to Plattview Road.
Correct.
They're gonna do, design it all at once, okay? And then if I look within the next three years, it's all funded to basically complete all those, they're gonna complete all that project. So you'll have, you'll have a Thirty-Sixth Street from Plattview to Cornhusker already done.
So, um, phase one is, was scheduled to be done at the end of the year. Phase one is basically blind down to Sheridan. They're a little behind schedule. Um, traffic lanes will hopefully be open by the end of the year, but it'll probably take them a few more months to kind of get the final utility work in place. Um, but yes, at the same time, then phase two is, you know, gonna be full swing from, um, basically Sheridan South to Plattview. But then also, yes, the city has made, um, a priority of Thirty-Sixth Street, basically three seventy to Cornhusker. Um, there's a lot of issues that need to be addressed along that stretch, particularly when it comes to the bridge and, um, flooding and things like that. So yes, those, those projects will be going on simultaneously.
And Sheridan South to Plattview, is that three lanes? Cause that's kind of how it ends now.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, feedback? Uh, we could take a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the C I P as presented, with the exception of adding the seven hundred fifty thousand dollar economic development fund in each of years, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, and twenty twenty-eight.
Second. Mr. Ackley, second by Ritz, please vote.
Ms. Van Horn, this is my fourth time hitting yes and okay, so.
All voted yes, motion carried.
Uh, that item will go to city council for a public hearing on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Next, we have current business. We have no current business, so look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Jacobson.
All right, please vote.
Ms. Van Horn, you can consider me a yes.
All voted yes, motion carried.